All right, everyone. I'd like to call this session of the Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. Can we please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And again, just to remind everyone, this meeting is being recorded, aired live and recorded. All righty. Let's see. So first thing on the docket is just approval of minutes from last meeting, but there was an error that we noted in them, so we're just going to postpone and bring that up at our next meeting. Next up, we have announcements for the President, and I do have some veterans who we lost recently to report, starting off with Charles Murphy, who was in the U.S. Army and served in Korea, passed away on May 5th. Gary Varnum, who was in the U.S. Army and served in Vietnam, passed away on June 17th. Robert Pierce, U.S. Marine Corps, who served in Vietnam, passed away on June 29th. Robert Thomas, who served in the U.S. Army and served in Vietnam, passed away July 1st. And Henry T. Signet, U.S. Army, who served in World War II, passed away on July 2nd. Can I please have a moment of silence for these veterans and all veterans of the town? Thank you, and thank you to those men for their service. Let's see. Next up, I do have a proclamation I'd like to read into the record from the Town Council. On behalf of the Town of Bridgewater, it is a great honor and pleasure that the Town Council presents this proclamation of recognition to Loretta Pistone, who, on the occasion of her 100th birthday, it was ordered that said, "July 27th, 2024, be recognized as Loretta Pistone Day here in the Town of Bridgewater." So, on behalf of the Council, I want to wish her a happy 100th birthday. All right. Next up is Citizens' Open Forum. Due to Massachusetts' open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. If anyone would like to come up and speak, please give your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes, please. I'll try and give you the five-second sign when time's getting close.
I'll go quickly. My name is Attorney John Norris. I am both a resident and a business owner here in Bridgewater. I live on Vernon Street. My business is Norris Law in the center of town. But I'm actually here on behalf of another citizen. His name is Michael Mezzolini. He owns property here in Bridgewater. He owns two parcels of land. As you'll see on the map that's being given out now, this is parcel map number 21. The blue land represents something called the Shoemaker Lot, and I'll just be calling it that from now on for quick ease of use. The other is his personal property also. It's the Orange Lot. Back in April, he became aware that the town was interested in that little piece of blue land, and we opened up communications with the town in order to try to make a swap on a foot per square foot basis with the town. We made communications in May, April, June, and then we got response on June 19th from the town that they're going to be taking his property by eminent domain. I've seen no action before the town this is happening. Mr. Mezzolini has been a resident of Bridgewater's entire life. His son Harrison is serving in the United States Army, and he was hoping that his son would be able to inherit that land at some point, but he's willing to exchange that to add to the other land so his son can inherit that. I only come before you today because I know that this land has yet to be brought before you for eminent domain. Should that action come before you, I implore you to reject it and instead force this town to come to the table to talk to Mr. Mezzolini, to have a fair shake and a discussion prior to forcing the courts and forcing the state to just take his property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. You go ahead. Okay. Sorry. Good evening. Melissa Raymondada, Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater. Thank you, councilors, for the good work that you do. On January 24th, 2023, the Town Council tabled with a vote four to three an ordinance for an adult retirement community in a planned development district, which many of you know as Lake Shore Center near Lake Nippenicket. Today, the Council is considering a zoning amendment regarding senior village housing developments in Bridgewater. The SVHD will be permitted in residential AB and other residential districts. The planned development district zoning includes a clause that states, "It is also the purpose of this section to allow a residential use without special review if the district permits single-family housing according to the present residential AB lot and yard requirements as of right." SVHD zoning is not a permitted use in the PDD according to the Table of Uses in the amended zoning ordinance. However, the SVHD zoning language itself outside of the Table of Uses should be very clear about the fact that the planned development district is not an option for any forthcoming SVHD projects. The same language should be added and amended within the current planned development district zoning. I would also argue, as residents of Bridgewater have been informed, that the gallons-per-day water and sewer usage of the PDD is limited to 100,000 gallons per day due to a 1988 special permit, that the current PDD zoning should be amended to remove any permitted use that could potentially bring this district beyond its daily water and sewer limitations. In addition to that, some suggestions for the purpose of the SVHD should be the best use of land in harmony with its natural features and retain the rural character of the town. With regard to number one on the zoning amendment, calculation of number of units, the maximum number of dwelling units permitted in a 55-plus development shall be computed by dividing the developable area of the zoning tract in square feet. For the purpose of this computation, the developable area shall be the total area of the tract, including the common land but excluding all streams, ponds, wetlands, 100-year floodplains, drainage movements, and areas subject to existing valid conservation and open space restrictions. What is not clearly stated here...
Five seconds, please.
Five seconds?
Yes, please.
What is not clearly stated here is that there's a 25-foot no-touch zone for all wetlands in Bridgewater according to the Wetlands Bylaw. Under no circumstances should the 25-foot no-touch zone be included in any calculation with regard to developable area as this land is protected. In addition to that, there's a... should be a change on under 2B with regard to changing the 25-foot wetland buffer to a 25-foot no-touch zone. This is town zoning, and the town zoning needs to match the town bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to speak, please?
Good evening. Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. In January of 2023, citizens of Bridgewater voted narrowly to approve the sale of retail marijuana in our town. It's been about a year and a half now, and if you recall, the proponents of that vote at the time said that the main reason why we should have that in our town was for increased revenue, and I believe proponents were saying that upwards of $200,000 per year was what the town was going to reap from allowing that to happen. Well, here we are, you know, 18 months since, and I guess my question is, how much revenue have we actually received from that vote and from retail marijuana? So if maybe at the next meeting, we could get a readout on exactly how much income we've received, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come on up.
Hello. My name is Jeanne Di Battista, 260 Lakeside Drive, and I have two comments. One is I'm really looking forward to the water presentation because I do think, as a town, we need to get a handle on what our water supply is, what our capabilities are, and how it should affect our future planning. Secondly, I'm interested in the same topic that Melissa brought up, which is the new changes to the 55-plus zoning. Basically, I'd really like to know what districts that applies to, what it doesn't, and have extreme clarity as to which ones apply, because we did meet with all of you a couple years ago. We discussed the specific area at Lake Shore Drive. We all agreed that it wasn't appropriate at that time, so we would like to see the same processes in place for citizens to, you know, participate in what decisions are made as it relates to that area, as it is an environmental area of critical concern. And I think that it is something that should always be carefully reviewed by this Council and by the town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Come on up.
Hi. My name is Bernice Morrissey, 150 Lakeside Drive. I'm here to back up my neighbors here about the concerns of water consumption and sewage and all issues that we're already seeing in the town for water, particularly water quality and consumption and all that's going on with the added buildings and development in our area. A good friend of mine, who's a professor of chemistry, says that in a civilized society, we drink water from a tap, and we're getting further and further away from doing that, sadly. So I just urge the Council members and the powers that be to really be careful about what you're issuing, especially a 55 and over is a high-volume water capacity. The second item I want to come... is all about water. I want to talk to this Council and ask for help and ask for some action items on the NIP. We have a problem down there with jet skis, and it is not going away. It's not ever getting any better. In 2005, myself and a couple of other neighbors formed a citizens petition to get a jet ski ban on the ballot. We went into Town Council... I mean, the Town Meeting on Monday, May 5th, and it was unanimously approved by everyone there to ban them for the sake of the environmental degradation to the lake. Now, here we are 20 years later, and because the Attorney General's Office approved the ban, but it got to the environmental police, and the director had the sole power to issue that a ban would not be issued, but he did respond that the packet that we submitted about the problems on the NIP, on February 5th, 2004, Director Murray's response said, "Even though they don't approve bans at that time, we did prove that were issues on the lake." Well, here we are 20... exactly 20 years later, and we're still having issues in the lake because we don't get any help. The... I talked to Chief Delmonte at the beginning of the season and said, "Even just a presence," because now we have a bylaw, bylaw Article 14, that says that they have to be off by 6:00 p.m. We compromised for that, but 6:00 p.m. has become 9:00 p.m. So that leaves no time for residents on the lake to have any peace and quiet. But it's not just the peace and quiet, it's the degradation and the eutrophication of the lake that's bothering me. I've been there for 30-something years, and I've seen wildlife disappearing. I mean, we don't see the small turtles anymore, the tree frogs, all those things that are part of the lake. And so if there's anyone here that has suggestions of how we move forward, but I need some action items, because there's no solution right now.
Thank you, Bernice.
Okay.
Anybody else like to come up for Citizens' Open Forum, please? Go once, go in twice. All right. Thank you. Thank you all for sharing. All right. Moving on with tonight's agenda, where we do not have any appointments, we do not have any hearings, we do not have any license transactions, so we will jump right to presentations. And the big presentation tonight is on our water situation. So we have water resources presentations via Environmental Partners. So I will turn it over to the Town Manager to introduce who will be speaking regarding to water.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to introduce Environmental Partners, but first I'll mention that our DPW Director is here and our Water and Sewer Superintendent Jonas is here as well. So Azu and Jonas can certainly fill in the gaps that Helen Gordon may not address. So I do want to introduce Helen. Helen is Principal with Environmental Partners. Environmental Partners has been on board with the town for now four or five years, specifically to address water challenges that we have and also to address and oversee the construction of the sewer treatment plant. Helen and her team also oversaw the construction of the water plant on High Street, which continues to require some supervision. But tonight, her goal, I think, is to give you sort of a more in-depth, detailed look at the water issues that we have talked about quite a bit around town. I think there is a lot of misconception about water issues, and there's a lot of work that has been done that people are unaware of. So honestly, I think Helen's presentation tonight is designed to address some of the longer-term concerns that everybody in town has and to allay some of the fears that we have some crisis, water crisis going on. So with that, I will introduce Helen, and I'll ask Deb to allow me to share. There we go. And if I find the presentation here amongst the clutter, I will bring it up momentarily. So Helen, if you want to just introduce yourself, and I'll certainly chime in on the historic slide as soon as I get the slides up and going here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening to help explain what we've been doing with your team in terms of water supply and so forth in the town. My name's Helen Gordon. I'm a registered professional engineer in Massachusetts, and I've been practicing consulting engineering for 40-plus years. I won't get into exactly the dates. I've had the pleasure of working with your team over the last four years, and I'm excited to have a conversation about all the good work they've done, all the good planning, and now we're at a point where we need to take some action. And as everyone knows, action takes money. So we do want to do a little bit of the historical, what's been going on over the last four years, where we are, and then some of the insights that we've gleaned from the master plan, 20-year master plan that we put together for the community.
Thank you, Helen. I'll just add, from a historical perspective, Water and Sewer Department has been in existence for decades upon decades. There was a period of time, decades and decades ago, where the belief was that it was a completely separate entity, separate and apart from the town government. That was not necessarily true. Today, we know that wasn't true, but to their credit or detriment, the Water and Sewer Commissioners at the time had an outlook that was focused on keeping the rates as low as possible. And that meant making sure that we had people and the equipment to cover the daily production, but it also meant that we were not going to invest a whole lot of money into capital upgrades or capital maintenance. So I think what you'll hear from Helen tonight is a lot of... a lot of what we're trying to do is playing catch-up after decades and decades of some capital neglect. So I just wanted to give you that frame of reference and try to, you know, explain where we are coming from, and I will certainly turn it back to Helen.
Thank you, Michael. So first of all, what I'd like to do is a little bit, if you can go to the next slide, Michael, talk about the Water Enterprise Fund. Now, I understand we'll be... I'll be making a presentation in a few weeks on the wastewater. And as Michael indicated, Water and Wastewater are combined. It's the same team. But let's talk about the goals of an enterprise fund. So the goals of an enterprise fund, and particularly Water, is to provide safe potable water in sufficient quantity and quality to ensure the health of the community. I'm not going to read every single one of these lines here. We'll be here all night. But I want to focus on what a good enterprise fund and a healthy enterprise fund looks like. And so the things that you need to focus on are capital costs in operation and maintenance. And on the capital costs end, there's three items that you have to consistently look at, and that's consistent infrastructure investment. Irrespective of whether or not you have new facilities, there's always capital improvements that you need to continue, not dissimilar to your car after so many miles, there's certain things you have to replace. It's just a part of infrastructure. In terms of capital costs, the other is new infrastructure, so expanding on capacity and replacing aging infrastructure. I will get into a little bit of the aging infrastructure and some of the challenges we have right now in terms of the water supply. And then technology upgrades to modernize equipment and systems. So this is the bucket of capital costs that you have to be consistently on top of. And then the operation and maintenance, it's daily, weekly, monthly, annual scheduled inspections with your team does regularly. There's also preventative maintenance measures that they consistently do to reduce the amount of capital costs that you might end up having to have. If you treat the equipment in a reasonably good fashion and do the maintenance faithfully, then you'll be able to extend the life of your capital investment, which is critically important for an enterprise fund. And then having a skilled workforce. And this is becoming consistently a challenge for communities in that we are lacking available labor force. I will let you know, as far as my conversation with Jonas, you're at... you have all the people you need right now for the positions that you had open. We have some really young staff that have been hired, and that is good. That means longevity will be there, and you'll have people that are committed to the community. The other thing you have to look at on operation and maintenance is regulatory issues, and they come up all the time, and you can't always plan for those. Next slide? So another thing is we need to focus on energy costs, so anything we can do for efficiency is critically important, and leverage consortiums as much as possible for all your purchases, and have a really good emergency response put together. And you've been working on all of these consistently. In terms of financial stability, reserves are critically important. It's just like you do have to run an enterprise fund like a business. It's not for profit, but you have to have reserve funds for emergencies. You never know what's going to happen, and there are rules of thumbs of percentages of your overall budgets that you should be carrying for reserves. Managing revenue is another one. Collecting user fees. You've done a great job on that with your implementation, which we'll talk about in a minute of your meter program, and you've really upped your game in that area. In risk mitigation, addressing revenue volatility and minimizing financial risk, your bond rating is very good right now, and we've been really lucky in being able to leverage lots of grants, both ARPA, the infrastructure bill funding, state-designated funds in the SRF loan program. So we're trying to put all those together. Next slide? So implementation goals on the operation and maintenance, it's really efficiency and better service levels. That was completed in 2017 when you did go through the consolidation of the Department of Public Works. That was your first step towards becoming more organized and leveraging improvements on a capital basis. So if you're doing a road, you replace the water main. If you're doing a road, you replace the sewer and doing it collectively to get, for the lack of a better word, the biggest bang for your buck when you're spending. When you're bidding a project, if you bid a larger project, there's a certain cost that's the same if it was a smaller project. Infrastructure investment that has been done to date. So $18 million at the High Street Water Treatment Plant to improve quality. That's been running and online since 2023. We're working out some HVAC issues, but it's running and it's producing good quality water. $2 million was spent on Cover Pond well replacement, and there'll be the High Street replacement. So we'll get into that in a little bit in terms of water supply. There's also a new regulatory driver that's been in place, and you've had to appropriate $360,000 towards lit service line inventory and then ultimately removal where appropriate. And then we are presenting here our insights from the townwide master plan that we did. So you've made some big capital investments over the last few years, and now we have some to-dos out of those. Next slide, please. Your current bond rating, as I said, is A3, and we have a 20-year master plan to try to balance out the costs that we're going to be spending. So let's talk about water system mass plant insights. We looked at quantity, quality, and then also the distribution. So in terms of water supply quantity, you have nine wells. Four go to High Street. You have a brand-new water treatment plant there that you're treating that water. There are three at Cover's Pond that has an iron and manganese water treatment plant, and that is currently treating appropriately. Your max day withdrawal... you have a max day withdrawal limit associated with your nine wells. So there's only so much you can get out of these wells, and then it depends on the quality and the age of those as well. Your current demand is 2.56 MGD, and this is kind of critical because what we're looking at is a supply deficit, which we all know that's the case. You had some notifications that we had some water supply deficit issues over the last few months, and it really relates to the fact that currently two of your nine wells are not being utilized because of their water quality. That is the Plymouth Wells, 10A and 10B. They have high iron, and they total 0.56 MGD, and you can see that right now your deficit is 0.53 MGD at high demand. So the goal is to see what can be done in order to maximize the water supply that you do have, and then is there any additional water supply you can get? Oh, million gallons a day is MGD. My apologies. So potential additional sources. What we're looking at right now and what we're submitting to the state for potential funding would be looking at bringing Plymouth Wells to High Street for treatment. It has the capacity. We can balance out the capacity of the other wells at High Street with these. It would require some design on a pump and some construction of a new raw water transmission main from Plymouth Street to High Street, but we could be treating it there, and then you wouldn't have to be building a separate facility at those wells. So that is an option for additional water supply to... in improving on the quality of it. In about 2016, you did receive approval for some new wells off of Vernon Street at a capacity of 0.56 MGD, and that was not moved forward for whatever reason at that time. We have actually reached out to Mass DEP, and we've been working with the town to extend the approval of that, which we will have shortly, with the option of potentially bringing those online. The challenge associated with that is that that will require a capital investment because of the water quality. So a separate water treatment plant would have to be built there, or many... or transmission mains over to an existing water treatment plant. That would be challenging. So we can... I have some tables here that talk about the costs of these things, so you can get a handle on it and some of the options that you'll be looking at. I know that through the... I know that through the economic development team that you, we've been having conversations already with Taunton Mass, they have available supply, and they're interested in conversations with a wholesale purchase of, it could be more than one MGD. That's an option that you might want to be looking at, and we have some numbers associated with that. And then again, Brockton, I would say the Brockton one's a little farther away in terms of development, and that's simply because in order for that to move forward, we'd be looking at, you know, Brockton would have to take over control of the desalination plant, and they're not at that point yet. So that's a number of years away in terms of the future.
I hope you're not going to go down that path. It's been a disaster for Brockton. I don't want to see it in Bridgewater. Just going to put that on.
It's, it's just an option, and so.
It's hard to listen to all of this and not be able to ask questions, to be honest with you.
So we talked about the additional, in terms of the quality, we talked about Carver's Pond, High Street, Plymouth. One of the things we are going to have to deal with is PFAS levels. You will exceed, you know, you're going to be exceeding the four PPM, which is the new U.S. EPA regulation, and that will require what I would envision is PFAS treatment at Carver's Pond for those wells, and then PFAS treatment at High Street. And if we bring 10A and 10B to High Street, we can treat the PFAS there, too, so you don't need three separate facilities. But if you were to bring on Vernon Street, you could potentially be, you'd be looking at building, as I said, a treatment plant there. So there's these cost benefits you're going to have to look at in those decisions. In terms of the actual water distribution system, next slide, please. It's really, I'm not going to go through all these numbers. Suffice it to say that currently your pressures are good, you're able to maintain them. There is a lot of old pipe in the system that needs to be addressed and needs to be replaced. And there's a proposed plan on high priority areas to do it, to increase pressures in areas which currently are on the, are having some challenges with available fire flow, and then also the lower pressure areas to try to initially improve that, so prioritizing those improvements as you go. And you can just flip the next one. This is just data that you can look at and ask questions on later on. So again, in terms of the water distribution system, prioritizing replacement of AC pipe, so asbestos cement pipe, you still have some in your system. The challenge with that is if you get pressure changes and pressure differentials, they crack really easy. They're usually the ones that end up leaking and having some, some issues associated with them. On the cast iron pipes, where the system pressures are 80 or above, you're in good shape. Anywhere below that, you'll want to look at replacing the cast iron. There is a possibility that we could do some adjustment of pump operations to regulate areas with high pressures, and it's always important to work with customers on pressure-reducing valves within their area. And then the other priority, as I said, was fire flow. And the final piece is water storage. And this is, I don't want to get too technical, so I'm trying to do this high level. So high level is you have two storage tanks. They're what we call stand pipes. So you fill it from the ground up. The actual operation area of the water for pressures in the system is only a portion of that. So you're utilizing the lower portion, you're filling from your wells with water that can't be used, even though it's turning around. That's water that's stored that doesn't need to be there. So when it's time to consider replacement of those tanks, the recommendation is to do elevated tanks. And so an elevated tank only has the storage in the zone that you need it for to maintain the pressures throughout your system, and you're not over pumping your wells with that, for that additional lower portion. And that's pretty much what I was trying to say on this slide, so we can go to the next slide. Where could you do that? If you do decide to do, you know, one of the things we're looking at right now, your two stand pipes are kind of in one area of town. If you were going to put a new one in, you want to put it near the other area, like Vernon Street potentially. Maybe if you decide that that's the way you want to go with Vernon Street, you could do a treatment plant, an elevated tank, and the new wells. Again, it's a big investment for a small amount of flow, but that is where we are. And then, as I said, the other two tanks, when they're ready to be replaced, we should be doing that with elevated tanks. That would be my recommendation, anyway. So here we are. We put together a master plan. It's 20-year master plan. So we did a hydraulic analysis. We went out and we did tests to confirm and calibrate it. We worked with Azu and Jonas and Caleb and the entire team to make sure we understood the system, and we did some simulations. So we took it from current day demand and then all the way 20 years forward. And we took into consideration, we worked with Barbara Rulie's team to discuss known developments that are coming, so we could plug those in to see what the impact of those would be, and to come up with a plan to meet that future demand. And that's what this is. So what we tried to do is, we put it in terms of, in order of importance, I guess I will say. So the first thing is supply. It really doesn't matter if you have a distribution system. If you don't have the supply and you need consistent supply. So right now, we're in the middle of, well, number nine has reached its life expectancy, and you're spending money right now. We're in the middle of doing pump tests, the 40-hour pump test to get approval to replace that well. So we'll be replacing that well, and there's already been 1 million put towards that replacement for planning and the initial design and so forth. And the same for well number 5A. And what we're proposing to do is that we replace those at the same time to leverage the bidding environment and not have two separate projects out, so try to do some economy of scale there. And they're pretty much on the same time span. One of the things we did is have conversations about roadwork that's being done in the community. And so Flag Street and Cross Street are going to be done, and so we have allocated funds for the water main replacement associated with that. So again, with the combination of DPW and all parties together, we're starting to do projects together, and that's a good way to leverage and reduce costs overall. We, there definitely needs to be, as we said, you know, the pump upgrades for Plymouth Street wells. If we do that, we're estimating that's about, well, 3.9 million to do that work, so about 4 million right now. And then there's some abandonment work of cast iron pipes. I won't get into the details. It's a hydraulics thing. So that's those, the projects, and so the estimated for FY '25 is 13 million. The next is, I put them in terms of five-year increments because we're not going to go year by year. It's depends, it's a little fluid. But these are the things that need to be done, and suffice it to say that we're, you know, for 2026 to 2030, it's $6.3 million. So what's in there? What are the big ticket items? You know, the Vernon Street well, as I said, you're going to need, you're going to need a treatment plant there, and based on the timing, in estimates that we have, that's a 38 million. It's a Level 1 estimate, so it's really got a lot of contingency in there, but we don't know what the market's going to look like. Carver's Pond does need some upgrades, so it needs an addition, needs piloting to do that, and that's a $7.3 million project. The High Street Water Treatment Plant, although new, you'll have to, in order to meet the PFAS regulations, you're going to have to install PFAS treatment at both Carver's Pond and High Street within that timeframe by 2030, is the requirement. So those two are, you know, together 14-plus million. And if you do the replacement of the Sprague Hill tank in that time period, an elevated tank would be somewhere in the vicinity of between 4 and 5 million dollars. And then what we're not even including here right now is lead service line replacement, which is a new mandate from the state. So as you might recall, I mentioned that we're doing an inventory study for the community right now under the regulations. You have to get your inventory in by October 16th, I think it is, and we're on schedule to do that. And at that point, you have to have a plan on how you're going to identify what you don't know and remove lead services where there are any. 2031 to 2035, and I notice I have a typo here. My apologies. I should have looked through it. So replacing, in terms of priority of water main replacement, so the AC and the, excuse me, asbestos cement and the cast iron water main along Vernon Street, that's a $7.6 million project. Then Gray Hill Tank will probably need to be replaced around that time period, so I put a placeholder for that. And then I have this connection to Taunton Mass Water System or Brockton D-Sell. Again, an option. If you're going, and what I'm trying to show here is if you go to wholesale with another community, then you potentially would not do the 38 million for Vernon Street. So this is kind of the area where you might want to think about long-term and where you want to go. And then the capital projects for 2036 to 2040 are all replacement of old water main. And of course, it's only getting older and older, and this is all the asbestos cement and the cast iron in the system. And the problem with cast iron is you're losing pressure because the diameter of the pipe is getting smaller due to tuberculation. And the AC is your areas where you're vulnerable for leaking and, you know, water emergencies because you have a big break. And really much, the same for 41 to 45. The point I'm getting at on these are you need to have a plan to replace all the older water mains, and you want to dovetail that with the sewer and the pavement as we move And that is it.
And that is it. Before I open up to any questions, maybe from the council, Mr. Dutton, do you have any closing comments, a follow-up on she said?
Nope. I, I don't have any closing comments, but I certainly encourage the council, if there are questions for Helen or Azu or Jonas, feel free.
Sure. So councillors, Ms. Lundy?
Thank you for your presentation. Very informative. Just a housekeeping thing, can I beg people, please, to take these little charts and turn them on a landscape and make them bigger because they're unreadable? Okay? I can see them up there barely, but they're hard to see, and they're big numbers, they're huge numbers. I'm just going to say again, I interrupted, and I'm going to say it, and I'm going to say it 100 times because I lived it before I moved here. Don't look at Brockton D-Sell. It's a disaster. It's been a disaster for Brockton, and it'll be a disaster for Bridgewater. I'm just going to say it. And all you got to do is look at the record. They're having problems. They wanted to buy the plant. It's been a nightmare, so.
Thank you, Ms. Lundy. Any other councillors with questions? Oh, Ms. Allenberg?
Yes, I have a question. You said that we could potentially buy water from Taunton.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any idea what the cost of that would be per gallons of water or whatever the measurement in comparison to the 38 million that you say we need to spend on town facilities?
Right. So I will tell you that that meeting, there was a meeting held with Taunton, and I believe, maybe Michael or Bob, you could kind of outline how that came to fruition, but they did reach out to the town and say they have extra water and they're looking for, they're looking for users. And with available water, they wanted to have a first conversation about whether or not the town would even be interested in it. So Michael and Mr. Rulie and myself went and met with their engineer and others in the city a month ago, about a month and a half ago, and we're waiting on some information that we have to understand. They do a little bit different treatment for their corrosion control. They use chloramines. We do not in Bridgewater. So one of the things I'll need to understand is, you know, is that, that could be an area that we could isolate and then have that. There's some gory details from a technical perspective. And then once I understand those, then we'll be able to come up with some costs associated with, okay, what do we have to do? Do we need a pump or do we not need a pump? Do we just need some pipelines? What does it look like? I have not received that information yet from their, their design consultant, so we're waiting on that information.
I have a follow-up question. Would we be purchasing water to supplement what we have going now, or are you looking to replace our current wells with Taunton water?
You're muted. I'm muted.
Okay, sorry. I'll repeat my question. Are we looking to supplement the existing water supply we have with Taunton, or are we replacing our aged equipment entirely with Taunton water?
Right now, the conversation, as it has gone, is that it would be a set quantity to supplement with the deficits that you've been running at, and maybe potentially not do some of the bigger capital projects if it becomes more cost-effective potentially.
So if we are going to be supplementing, do we still have to do the 38 million then to be able to have that online?
That's what I'm saying. So the Vernon Street wells would be additional supply, and so the question becomes, do you want to supplement? The Vernon Street wells aren't wells that are on your system yet. So you have Carver's Pond, High Street, Plymouth. So right now, the plan could be, and again, it's what you want. It's, this is your plan, so this is why we have this conversation. Those wells and the Vernon Street wells, and go along for a while and see how you do. And if you have more development, you need more demand, you're going to need more water supply. Or High Street, Carver, Plymouth, Taunton, no Vernon Street. There's many or all of the above, depending on. There's many or all of the above, depending on what you're looking to do and where you are.
So do we have any handle whatsoever on what the cost will be in all of this?
Ms. Ellenberg, Mr. Rulie might have some information to share.
Just as a point of clarification, prior to the meeting that Ms. Gordon referenced, Mr. Dutton and I had a meeting with the mayor of Taunton to initiate this process. Subsequent to that, we had a larger meeting that brought in Helen, Jonas, Italian Bond, who is the engineers for the city of Taunton. City of Taunton's largest water customer right now is the Department of Corrections in Bridgewater. So they are already bringing water to Bridgewater. Their water is a commodity that has currency right now, so they're interested in selling it. Not to get off base, but we've also mentioned that we're having conversations with the Department of Corrections on wastewater. So we're looking at a combined infrastructure project in the future. The city of Taunton has agreed to pay the cost for the initial engineering to determine the feasibility of bringing additional water to Bridgewater. So to councilperson Ellenberg's question, we don't have any handle right now on what the cost would be. I think we're looking at options. We seem to believe that with federal money and DCAM money, that this is a cheaper option than putting new wells in and building a new treatment plant, but we're very preliminary in these conversations. The good news is, we're having these conversations. I agree with councilmember Lindy, I don't see a lot of hope with the Brockton D cell plant in terms of water quality and cost. The water quality that Taunton can provide is exceptional in terms of what it is. So I think it's worthwhile to continue to pursue that, and we will continue to do that. But until we have a handle on what all of the costs are gonna be, and what Taunton is willing to contribute, we won't know what, I think in my experience, this is gonna be cheaper than putting two new wells in and a treatment plant on Vernon Street. Long answer to your question, I apologize.
Councillor Strickland?
Thank you so much, thank you Helen for your presentation. Has any conversation happened with some of our neighboring towns about their satisfaction with Taunton's water? Lakeville, Norton, Rainham, Middleborough, all of those towns that do get water from Taunton? I'm just curious as to whether or not we've engaged any of those towns as well?
So what we do know is that historically, Taunton took advantage of Lakeville, and the water that Taunton gets comes from Lakeville. They suggest that that water almost doesn't need to be treated, it's so clean. So now Lakeville has the privilege of buying back the water that they're giving to Taunton. So we have no reason to believe that the quality of that water is any way compromised. As Helen indicated, they treat their water differently, the pressure is different. So initially, you know, if we looked at infrastructure project from the university to the prison, we might have a system that's not interconnected with ours yet, but I think the water quality issue is not an issue.
Any other councillors?
Thank you, thank you Helen for the presentation. This is obviously a topic that everyone in this room and beyond this room has been very interested in. I just want to make sure I can summarize, because very high level and oversimplify. So we are overcapacity, we are exploring options of purchase as well as infrastructure upgrades, and we don't have final costs yet to make any sort of full recommendation yet.
In terms of the Vernon, if I might, in terms of the Vernon Street moving forward with that. So the other work, you know, in terms of 10A and 10B, and replacing well nine, and replacing well five, that's, has to be done in order to continue supporting what you need to do right now. And if we do 10A and 10B, we should be filling that deficit piece, because right now, 10A and 10B, the iron levels are so high that, you know, all the great water, better water that's coming from High Street now is gonna get diluted by putting them into the system. So it's, when we get the dollars about what it would cost and what, you know, whatever the memo of understanding or whatever agreement with Taunton, then you'll have the ability to make that decision on that 38 million. So that's the one that's kind of in flux.
And so an education point that I think might be helpful, if we purchase water versus build infrastructure, those, how do we pay for that? Because if we purchase water, is that a capital expenditure, or is that just a regular expense?
So the infrastructure piece is the capital piece.
Right.
And so however that gets distributed, I've seen it when there's a regional, you know, sometimes there's a certain portion of it, for example, that Taunton would pay, and a certain portion that Bridgewater would pay for the capital infrastructure. But the wholesale would be, the town would be getting a bill, and it would be passed on as part of the water bill.
Right.
As part of the, so it's, you're being charged for the use at that point.
Correct.
So that's how it gets split up. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I wanted to surface that, so that it's very, very clear, that it's, you know, that that is something that's an actual very hard cost, and it's a short-term fix, right? So ideal scenario, because we may not be able to raise all the capital to do infrastructure work, is that we would look to purchase water, right? But what an ideal scenario would also be is that we're still moving as much infrastructure upgrades as fast as humanly possible, because if we just Band-Aid by purchasing, what if there's some kind of, do you get what I'm saying? Like, I'm sitting here a little bit worried about, like, I know we need to fill some needs, and we've got some gaps, but I also want to make sure that we think...
All right, supply isn't the only issue, and I think that's, I think what you're uncovering is...
Sorry, the what isn't the only?
Supply is not the, so the deficit isn't the only issue. Obviously, it's important to focus on because you need the water, but all the other work that needs to be done, just because you cook up to Taunton doesn't mean you don't have to spend all that other money.
Right.
You have to spend all that other money. The thing that's in flux is that 38 on Vernon Street, whether you decide to develop it and add a third treatment plant to your, to your infrastructure.
Yeah. And then, and probably more for the town administration team, you know, probably not surprising, but of course, one of the hottest topics is the fact that we have passed this recent legislation, and we are encouraging development, and we've got, you know, for instance, a project that's coming up. So I know that you are, you know, as mentioned in the presentation, future developments. So I think folks are gonna be concerned around timing of all that, right? Being able to pay for water purchase, infrastructure upgrades, while, you know, for instance, if we've got a development that's bringing in 150 new units, what will the timing look like around that? It's like, are we gonna be able to supply in time?
I think what Helen has identified is that once five and nine are online, that we are going to have sufficient capacity in the short term. We've always said that we're never gonna build the 1,400 units that the MBTA communities required, but regardless of it's Vernon Street or it's Taunton, there are going to be capital expenses associated with that. From cost-benefit analysis, if we're going to do wastewater improvements and water improvements, it makes sense to do those simultaneously, run those pipes along the rail line out to the Department of Corrections. We can't have a crystal ball and say Taunton is gonna give us water forever, but the amount of water that they're able to give us potentially is more than sufficient for all of the new development that we're talking about. And Vernon Street is still an option down the road if we had to go there. We hope that we don't have to go there. You know, our whole premise of vision-to-reality is to concentrate development in areas that we already have infrastructure, so we don't have more expansion outside of the downtown area. But these are significant infrastructure projects that are gonna require state money, federal money, you know, the Department of Corrections works through DCAM, we work through federal agencies, so very complicated, but we're having these conversations now, and they're very positive conversations. But, you know, these are probably three, four, five years out in terms of bringing anything online, in terms of figuring out the engineering, then doing the design, and the further engineering, and then doing the actual infrastructure.
And it's the hope, and it's the hope, or is it hope or expectation that developers will also help with somebody's...
Certainly, I mean, and one thing that, you know, we've talked about through the zone changes and the form-based code for certain projects, you know, particularly looking at Campus Plaza as an example, us increasing the available density is an opportunity for us to say to that property owner or developer, we're looking for contributions towards infrastructure improvements, because we've increased the value of their property, but also because, you know, we would be in compliance with the MBTA communities' legislation. There is money through housing programs for infrastructure improvements, there's mass development money available that we are able to access. So there are many heads to this dragon that we're looking at simultaneously. But again, I think as Helen has pointed out, if we didn't have any new development, if things were status quo, we still have a large bill coming due, and we're trying to get ahead of that.
Yeah. I'm sure others have questions. The one last thing, maybe at the end, is sort of like, what's the next steps for us? And what do we expect afterwards? So we don't have to answer that now, but...
Yeah, exactly.
Question?
So aside from the deficit, I think the 1A to the water questions in town from residents is really around quality. Could you talk a little bit about why maybe you believe that residents often cite quality water, Bridgewater, as an issue? And will these improvements address that?
So what I can say about the water quality is, I have not done any studies associated with Carver's Pond, so I can't speak to specifics around that and how it's operating in terms of managing iron and manganese. And that's one of your biggest issues, is unfortunately, the wells that you have and the aquifer that you have are high in iron and manganese, and that's the water quality problem. And so the treatment that's been put in place for High Street, I mean, we're getting really good quality water out of there. In addition to all the capital work, one of the things Jonas and his team has been doing is the flushing. And it's this difficult balance when you have a water deficit, that you're also flushing water mains. But it's important to do that in order to keep the water moving and to keep the scum that gets formed, and I know it's a water main, it sounds, but it's water from the ground, and even though it's treated, there is a scum that gets formed. And so flushing is really an important part of the overall program, and I know that Jonas and his team are on top of that regularly, and that's going to help. So it's one of those things where now we have the new High Street, it's gonna take some time to, the existing pipes in that area to kind of flush out and see the positives. The challenge, as I was saying, with the deficit, as soon as you turn 10A and 10B on, that goes right into the distribution system. Now, they are treated for pH control and disinfection, but it's just chemical treatment at that little pump station. So that goes in, and that has higher iron and manganese. Now, there's no limit, there's no maximum contaminant level limit by the state for iron and manganese, but it's a quality issue, and the more you can treat for that, then the better the quality is going to be. And, you know, Carver's Pond is old, and it's going to need an upgrade, and that will ultimately assist in that area as well.
Okay, but just as a second part of that question, this plan just solely addresses the capacity, unless the quality?
Say that again, please.
The plan that you presented today addresses the capacity question, but not the quality question?
Both.
Okay.
Absolutely both, yeah. Because we talk about the treatment for PFAS and for iron and manganese.
Perfect, thank you.
Both, absolutely. You can't have one without the other.
Councillor Chase?
Thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate your presentation and your remarks, we certainly need the benefit of the education you can provide to us on this issue. I'm just curious whether the Vernon Street wells, which if my understanding is correct, they've not been drilled as yet, is that the case?
So they have actually, they had been previously tested in the 48-hour pump tests done, and you had a permit to install pumps and start using them, and that permit lapsed. We were able to, MAR drillers went out and reestablished, because it's been so long since they were pumped, so we got some water quality tests, and we put that together and sent it off to Mass DEP to get an extension on the permit as a potential water supply for you.
Just with respect to iron and manganese, do we know if those wells, how they compare with our existing wells and Carver's Pond?
And that's a really good question, because Vernon Street are bedrock wells, and the other wells are not, and it is not, they're, the iron and manganese levels, I actually think the manganese was more of the issue than the iron on those, but the iron is not bad quality. You still are gonna need to treat, but in terms of the other water supplies you have, the quality is as good.
So roughly comparable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just on the same point, with respect to, we've heard comments which seem to indicate that the water from Taunton is of excellent quality. Do we know that with respect to iron and manganese, what the content is for that water supply?
I don't have any of the water quality data, that's the information we've been waiting for. So we had, we went through a list of, we need water quality data, and we need pressure information on their distribution system, and then the treatment protocols that they use. What are all the chemicals they use for treatment? So they don't, their treatment is really focused on chemical injection versus a filter. I don't, and I am waiting to get the information on that. So I can't answer that, I am sorry.
So there's at least some potential there, that there's something incompatible, perhaps, with respect to our existing system and that water supply?
The incompatibility is the type of corrosion control that's used, and that's a big issue in terms of when you start blending waters, they use chloramines and you do not. So one of the things we're thinking, and this kind of speaks to a little more of that regional kind of development area perspective that Bob was speaking to, in that we could isolate that area of town and have the water coming from Taunton for that area of town, and the rest of the community have the wells. In that way, because one of the things we'd have to do is, we have to go through a very large corrosion control analysis, if we were going to blend it into the well system. And that would be, you know, additional costs that, right now, we don't, it could be one of those things, so this would be my recommendation, potentially, depending on where you want to go, you could say, okay, we're gonna initially start with just that area, isolate it, get that, balance out our deficit and our water supply, and then in the future, consider blending, and then do a corrosion control, and get that, once you know what the quality of water is and how it's going.
Thank you. Just one final point on that, on that thread. My, I would imagine that water from a desalination source has no such content as manganese and iron.
Well, it goes through membranes, so... Well, it goes through membrane, so it's decel, it's taking out PFAS, it's taking out...
Arguably, it is the cleanest, is that not the case?
Yeah. I don't know the quality of the water that's coming out of that particular plant, and I'm not trying to be cagey on that answer, I apologize, but I want to be really careful. I mean, membrane treatment is the best treatment you can get, yes. It's very costly, it's very energy intensive, and, you know, there's a lot of issues associated with it. And I'm sorry, I can't, don't have my glasses on.
Ms. Chase?
Mr. Chase, the counselor indicated is, Brockton has a long way to go to figure out what they're even going to do. I mean, we're talking years down the pike. This is not something that is going to happen. Taunton's a more realistic potential, in my mind, for the community.
Taunton has promised us that the information that Helen said we don't have, that we would, we've agreed to meet again in September, and they would provide us with that information.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Any other counsel, Counselor McGrath?
Hi, I'm curious about something. Say if I'm a developer, and I have about 15 acres, and I want to make a system living there, can I build my own water and sewer treatment on my property?
Potentially.
Potentially?
Yes.
So, saying that certain areas can only pump in so much gallons, potentially, they could build their own water and sewer.
Yeah, we can talk about that when we get to that ordinance.
Okay, no, I just wanted to see if we could, if a developer could do that, so they can...
They would have to find the well supply and get it permitted. And there's not a whole lot of withdrawal permits going out there. That piece, the water supply would be a particular issue for them.
Well, they could get it from Taunton. We're close. I'm here in Bridgewater.
If you're speaking, and I don't want to get us off track, if you're speaking about Lake Shore, very unlikely that they would get water from Taunton, just because of the location of the existing piping and what it would take there. Could they drill wells out there? Yes, potentially. Could they approach the town of Rainham that has wellfields a half a mile from where they are? That's a potential, too, but I think it's very unlikely that, we look at the opportunity with Taunton to serve that area from Bridgewater State initially to the prison, and then potentially coming down Route 18, where we don't have infrastructure past 900 Bedford Street for future development. But to get it all the way over to Claremont, I think would be cost prohibitive.
But they could have their own water and sewer treatment?
They would need to have.
For, to continue building?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, Ms. Allenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You stated that the permit for the Vernon Street well had lapsed, and that you've asked DEP for it to be extended. What is the current status of that permit with DEP?
We're just waiting, they just wanted to review the water quality data, so we should be getting something in the next 30 days. They made it pretty clear that it was, all they wanted was updated water quality data, that they would extend it. But we don't have it in hand.
Ms. McKinnon, have a question?
Thank you for the presentation, Helen. My questions are actually for Azu. Do I need to suspend the rules, or can he just come up?
No, no.
All right. Where, first thing first, is where exactly on Vernon Street are the wells? Are they down near Beach Street? Are they back behind, near the power lines?
Yeah, the Vernon Street, I am Jonas Kozlowski, Water and Sewer Superintendent. The Vernon Street wells are located on the high-tension wires off of Vernon Street there. They're in that...
They're in that general area?
They're all motocross bikes.
They're both in there?
What's that?
Both of them are in there?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Then, you think it would help if the wells are over there, with it being so elevated when it comes to adding pressure to the system?
Well, I'm not an engineer, so I can't do the answer to that.
That's why I was asking, Azu, yeah. But, what else was I going to ask?
Anything would help.
We only have two water treatment facilities, right?
Correct, we have two.
High Street and Carver's Pond, right?
High Street, Carver's, and we have Wells 10A and 10B on Plymouth.
Uh-huh. So I used to work for a bonded construction company, and we would work on the water treatment facilities around the area, and I can say both Rainham and Easton have three. And I mean, I'm not all for spending money, but I do think Vernon Street should be something we look into to keep money and water in town. And I mean, I don't think we need a tower over there, but I definitely do think that would, should be a route we do take into consideration. I mean, we can take the water from other towns for now to try to make sure everything's working, but that's something I would like to see be done in town. And then...
So, what we should keep in mind, though, Counselor, is when you talk about not needing another tower, you do need those towers for storage, because your wells can't pump 24, you know, you have, you need that storage to do pressure with your system.
When it's so spaced out, though, from two being on one side of town and then nothing on the other side, would we need the storage if it's just going through the system?
But you will need, well, you'll have to treat it. And then you're talking about the infrastructure improvement, distribution network to get to the treatment plants. So you have to weigh that, the cost of those new distribution lines.
We have no substations or anything around town either, right?
No.
Do you think that it would help, though, with the pressure in the system, with it being a higher elevated area of town?
Yes, yes. But again, it is possible also that you need another treatment plant, because Carver's is very old.
Oh, yeah. We just did new membrane and all that there recently, didn't we? Two years ago, didn't we do new made or membrane over there?
Uh, filters, yes. But that, but still, you have the valves that we're trying to replace.
I get that, yep.
So, the, I just want to make sure, to your question, the Counselor, Ellenbrock's regarding our supply. So the Taunton will definitely help with the supply, but we keep in mind that the wells that we have are capped in terms of capacity, withdrawal capacity from the DEP. So it will definitely help if we get that additional water supply, because it will not count against our withdrawal.
Reinage, yeah. And just one more question. There's no list or anything that shows every street and what piping it is under there, if it's asbestos or any of that, is there?
Yes, there was. We've done a compilation of that. And so, that's also the, when you're talking about capital improvements, those are one of the things that we've actually looked at.
Yeah, it was good to see Flag Street and Cross, and the Crosshairs for now, because I know those were old. So, I believe that's it for me. I might stop in your office at some point to see that map, but besides that, thank you, Azu.
Thank you, Counselor. I want a final question, Mr. Liddy?
Yes, I don't know if it's the appropriate thing to ask, but where does PFAS treatment fit into all of this? I didn't hear that mentioned.
So, I did mention it, so the PFAS, I...
It's two comments to be added, and FYI.
And so just, and I might have just glossed over it, which I, there's a lot here. So if we go to, let me just find them, capital projects for 2026 to 2030. So the way the new EPA regulation is, so you're already meeting your, pretty consistently, there was maybe one instance, but pretty consistently, the current Mass DEP regulation, which was the 20 PPT. But the 7 PPT, you have to have everything in place by the end of, by 2030. So, if you look here, we have project number three, Carver Pond Water Treatment Plant Building Edition for PFAS removal, okay? It's right there. And then High Street will need PFAS removal there as well. And then if you were to do Vernon Street, what we did was we just automatically included that in that 38 million, that it was treatment for iron, manganese, and PFAS.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I got it. I asked Deb for it. It said that it was on the agenda tonight, so I...
Deb, get you a copy.
I asked her to get me a copy. I also think we should have copies of stuff well in ahead of meetings.
Just a closing question for me again. Thank you, Helen, for the presentation, the information. Through you, to either Mr. Rulie or yourself, again, a lot of the big question that a lot of the public has is obviously, do we have the capacity to do any type of building at this point in time? We got obviously potential projects on Broad Street, and we've got the project across from the Campus Plaza. So with our current state, can we take on those projects right now? Do we have capacity to bring those onboard, to give public reassurance that we can do that? Do we have to do anything with our current discharge permit, or adjust the levels that we're currently doing? Can we speak to that right now, just to kind of give that information to the public of where we currently stand?
Yeah, I think when the timing of new projects coinciding with five and nine coming back online, we're going to have sufficient access to water, and we're not going to be in excess of what the discharge permit is for wastewater. Clearly, we need to continue to look ahead, but those projects in and of themselves are not going to put us over a capacity. Now, I think, you know, Manager and I spoke earlier today, the most recent issue that we had with water was a combination of DEP doing flow tests at the same time that we're in the hottest, at that time, hottest time of the year. So they were drawing down water when we needed to be adding water. So there was some lack of communication there, but that's what precipitated that particular issue.
Great, thank you very much. All right.
Can I ask one last question?
Go ahead, Ms. Allenberg.
Wells number five and nine you just mentioned, and apparently there was 10A and 10B, which you say has the problem, the other problem, but what's doing with five and nine? Did I miss something?
Oh, so five and nine have to be replaced. So they, their age is such that every year, the wells get cleaned, that's part of the operation and maintenance program, and every so many years, they have to be redeveloped. And the last time nine was redeveloped, it didn't rebound to its capacity that we have the permit for, and it can't be fixed, so that has to be replaced. So that's that nine. And five ended up being the same. So five and nine are actually down right now, and that's why we're in this deficit issue.
I'm a layman to water issues. Could you kindly explain, what do you mean that it needs to be developed? What do you mean by it needs to be developed?
So, it needs to be a new screen, a new pump, and for well nine and five, we actually have to dig holes next to it with, we have a requirement that you can do a replacement well with a minimal amount of permitting within 250 feet of the existing well. So the first thing you have to do is go out with a drill rig and punch holes and try to find another location within 250 feet that produces that...
A good flow of water.
That flow you're looking for. So, that takes time, you know, the last five, six months, that's what we've been doing. We've been punching holes, and we found good capacity for nine, and we're doing the final 48-hour pump test for the five location that we found. As soon as we get those done and submitted to the state, then they're going through their permit process, say we can build a new replacement well, we drop them in, we build it, and then we have that supply now.
And what would the timeline for such a thing be?
So we're, right now, I'd have to look at the overall schedule. We are in, we're going to be starting, we finished all the, when we finish the 48-hour pump test, we're going to be starting on the design. So we have to design the pumps, we have to get all the plans and specifications together, and then we have to go out to bid, and we're, you know, if at all possible, we're looking to try to bid that in the January, February timeframe, so we can get them. And again, we're bidding them as one project, so we can get them done at the same time. And so the spring period is what we're working towards as much as possible.
Does it depend on 2025?
It could go into 2026. I just, I'm not going to, it depends on equipment and availability.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
So, is it safe to say that we can't guarantee for the people who want to build until five and nine are online? Because those two will give us capacity? Now, I'm just curious about those who are trying to build in town.
I think we have capacity now. Clearly, we're probably looking at an 18- to 24-month construction period, so, but we have capacity today if one or two of these projects were to come online. Neither of them have started yet. So, yeah, I think...
By the time those wells are done, hopefully, it'll time out well with those other projects.
Correct.
So, we're on track, we're on track. Yes, I just want to kind of move on with the agenda.
Just, yeah, I just actually wanted to ask, so like, what's next steps and the next update?
All right, so, well, again, I think the plan is to get those wells online, and what other...
No, but I mean, in terms of like, so you're exploring options, getting more estimates?
Yeah, we're continuing to talk with Taunton, we're continuing to talk to the congressional delegation. We have two congressional districts, which is good for us if we're talking to Taunton in terms of federal money. DCAM is involved in conversations because of the state piece, so I mean, all of this has been ongoing and continues to be ongoing.
We have options in different directions that we can go, and that's, you know, the best situation for the town is that, is having options, so. Very good, thank you again very much. We just want to move on with the agenda as we have it. Next up in presentations, we do have specialized code presentation, Mass Department of Energy Resources.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to introduce Lisa Sullivan, who is the Southeast Regional Coordinator for the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities. And I'm not sure if Michael Rossi is here?
Michael Rossi's here.
And Michael Rossi as well, who is from PSD Consulting. So, I will just turn it over to Lisa.
Hi, Counselors, thank you for inviting me tonight. I've had communication with Carlton Hunt, the Energy Committee member, for many months in advance of this, and as well as Mr. Chase. Michael, are you going to load the presentation? Great. So I am the Regional Coordinator for the Green Communities Program, and I serve 84 cities and towns. And you are a green community. You've been a green community since 2011, and you've received over $1.1 million in funding to do energy efficiency improvements in municipal buildings. We've even done some well replacements and frequency drives, VFDs, in some of your well treatment areas. And tonight, we're going to talk about the Mass Municipal Opt-In Specialized Code, which is a building code. So you are currently enforcing the stretch code in Bridgewater, you're a stretch code community, and people inquired about possibly looking into adopting the specialized opt-in code, which would require legislation on your part to do so. Okay, next slide, please. So you're probably all aware of the Climate Act of 2021. The legislation was signed into law, and it updates the greenhouse gas emission limits related to the 2008 Global Warming Solutions Act. And it commits Massachusetts to achieve net zero emissions in 2050, and it authorizes the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs to establish an emissions limit of no less than 50% for 2030, and no less than 75% for 2040. And then we'll get to 100% by 2050. And with that climate legislation, they put DOER, the Department of Energy Resources, in charge of updating the stretch energy code, which happens basically almost every three years. Base building code is updated, and the stretch code is updated. They also tasked us with coming up with specialized opt-in code and a community fossil fuel pilot that was offered to 10 communities. Next slide, please. So building, built, new building especially, new construction, has an important role to play in reducing emissions. Building code is the primary policy impacting new buildings. About 1% per year of new constructions, of buildings is brought on per year. So between 2023 and 2050, about 27% of all buildings will be constructed. So if we can affect those buildings and reduce emissions in those buildings, we'll be along, we'll be achieving our goal... we'll be achieving our goal quicker. New buildings are easiest and cheapest to make 2050 compliant, and new construction market helps drive cost reductions in building retrofits, because when you're doing 1% of the building stock per year, you're, you're teaching people how to install heat pumps, you're increasing the supply chain, et cetera. Next slide, please. So this is just showing the 2020, what the current grid emissions are, 680 pounds per megawatt, and the pounds of emissions to deliver one mega BTU of heat. And it's just showing that electric heat pumps use 45% less than natural gas. Next slide, please. And then in 2050, because the future grid is going to have less emissions, it's going to be cleaner, more will come from renewables, et cetera, 200 pounds per megawatt, it will be 85% less that's coming from an electric heat pump than gas. Next slide, please. So currently, to be a green community, which I said you became in 2011, you met five criteria. And we've come up with a program for communities that want to go to the next level. Many of them are communities that were new to the program. Our program started in 2009, so Bridgewater was kind of an early adopter. So some of those are the climate leaders, and they have climate action plans, and they have their own net zero goals. Some match up with the state's goals, and they've asked us to go further. And so we've come up with this Green Communities 2.0 plan called Climate Leaders. And basically, we have created a climate leader's criteria that kind of goes above and beyond the green community's criteria. You would still be a green community if you choose to become a climate leader, it's just you would also have climate leader designation. And you would want to achieve the things on the right. I will, I think you know that you needed to adopt as of right citing for renewable energy, alternative energy or generation, R&amp;D or manufacturing, adopt expedited permitting process, create an energy reduction plan to reduce energy use by 20% over five years, purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles, and adopt the stretch code. Those were the five criteria for green communities. You would still have those in place, but you'd be upgrading to the specialized stretch code, you'd be upgrading to a ZEV-first policy, which would look at battery electric vehicles, plug-in hybrids, hybrids first, even beyond the green community's fuel-efficient vehicle policy. You'd be creating a municipal decarbonization roadmap for 2030 and 2050. This roadmap would be for your municipal operations, and you'd have a municipal decarbonization commitment. Often what that means, it would be a, maybe if you have a climate action plan, it could be the executive summary, or it might be a resolution that says you intend to meet the state's goals for 2030 and 2050. And then you would establish and maintain a local committee to advise, coordinate, and or lead clean energy and climate activities, which I believe you do still have an active energy committee. I know that Carlton Hunt was serving when I last spoke with him. Next slide. The one thing I will also tell you about climate leaders is we anticipate the designation to have significant, a significant carrot if you achieve those criteria for designation. As I mentioned, you've received about $1.1 million in green communities grants to date since 2011. We're anticipating climate leader grants, we're calling them accelerator grants, because they're meant to accelerate the road to decarbonization. And we're anticipating that those will be well beyond what green communities offers, and perhaps start at half a million dollars. So there'll be significant opportunities to decarbonize your municipal operations. And with this, I'd like to introduce Michael Rossi, who is a consultant from PSD Consulting. And he is our consultant, and he works with us on code specialty.
All right, thanks so much, Lisa. So as Lisa mentioned, my name is Michael Rossi. I'm an energy code specialist with Performance Systems Development, or PSD. We provide energy code training and technical support to the DOER, along with other groups that have questions about what's in the energy code. So I'm going to dive into a more detailed presentation to explain more about what's actually in the specialized energy code. So first, I want to give a little bit of a lay of the land in Massachusetts. So Massachusetts actually has three different versions of the code, as described here in this pyramid. So the base code is the code that about 50 or so communities follow, and that is actually based on the 2018 version of the International Energy Conservation Code, or IECC, which is a national model code developed by the International Code Council. And additionally, as part of that, there's also some amendments that are Massachusetts-specific on top of what's already in that code. But what you guys are, Bridgewater, is a stretch code community. And that's actually based on the 2021 version of this IECC code with some additional Massachusetts amendments. And the requirements for the stretch code are for new construction, major additions and additions, and a majority of the communities in Massachusetts, about 256, plus those additional 45 at the top there, are, follow the requirements in the stretch code. And then at the top, you have that specialized code, which is what we're going to be focusing on today, which is under consideration for adoption, which only impacts new construction. And 45 municipalities in the state so far have adopted this specialized code. Next slide, please. And yeah, this is a good map showing sort of where each of the communities are in, in terms of adoption. So I don't know if you can see the color distinction great, but the tan white color are the communities that are currently on the base code. The light blue color is the communities that are on the stretch code, and that dark blue color with the green outline are the communities that have adopted the specialized opt-in code. Next slide, please. All right, so I'm going to dig into some of the specific provisions of what's in the codes now. So, next slide, please. Great, so just some initial information about the specialized code, because there does seem to be a little bit of misinformation out there about what's in it, I want to just dispel some rumors. The specialized stretch code applies only to new buildings, it has no impact on existing buildings or historic houses. There aren't any additional requirements for the specialized code if the builder chooses upfront to build an all-electric home, meaning they use electric equipment for space heating, water heating, cooking, and clothes drying. Additionally, it's cheaper to build and operate an all-electric home versus the base code, and that's primarily because installing a heat pump is one system, whereas if you're under the base code and you're using a furnace plus a cooling system, like a central AC, you're adding in the costs of both systems. And on top of that, there's lower operating costs associated with building to the opt-in code. So the idea of it is forward-proofing, or forward-thinking and future-proofing, so makes new buildings as efficient as possible, and saves homeowners money if they want to convert their house to all-electric in the future. And that's because, I'll get into specifically why in a minute, part of it is a pre-wiring requirement. So if you're installing any fossil fuel equipment, you have to have electric, or you have to have an outlet nearby for the future conversion to electric equipment. And that's always cheaper to do upfront than it would be 10 years down the line, because you don't have to poke holes in the building envelope to wire the new equipment. So the EV wiring requirements, there's no changes in this opt-in code for them, it's the same as what would be required under the stretch code. And as Lisa mentioned, it'll lock some funding opportunities for municipalities and schools. Next slide, please. Great, so I'm going to give a brief description about what the HERS rating is in Massachusetts. These requirements are more applicable to the stretch code rather than the opt-in code, but it's just language you want to understand. So the way I describe HERS is a miles-per-gallon sticker type thing for, like, for a car, but for a house. So the lower the score, the better, and a HERS 100 is the equivalent to a new home that was constructed in 2006. In Massachusetts, the HERS average in 2020 and 2021 was a 51. And a zero-energy home would be considered a HERS zero or below. So there's, you can also get into negative scores there. The changes for the different codes are, show the difference in the HERS index. As of July 1st, 2024, for both the stretch code and the opt-in code, the HERS requirement is a 42. Next slide, please. Great, so now I'm going to compare some of the specific requirements that are in the specialized code itself. So as I first mentioned, for a new all-electric home of any size, the HERS requirement is a HERS 45. Or there's this other alternative compliance pathway called passive house, which is another option to get to the code. And that is extremely airtight design that really takes into consideration all the principles of building science. There's two options for passive house compliance that are third-party certification programs, the Passive House Institute, which is an international standard, as well as FIES, which is more of an American standard, formerly Passive House Institute, United States. So if you're all-electric, the stretch code and the specialized code requirements are basically the same. For a new home that is choosing to use mixed fuel, and that's combustion equipment for any space heating, water heating, cooking, or clothes drying equipment, if it's under 4,000 square feet, the requirement for the stretch code would be a HERS 42. But then additionally, there are requirements under the specialized code to install a solar photovoltaic system with a minimum of four kilowatt capacity on roof, as well as wiring for future electrification. And that's what I was describing earlier, so essentially, it's having an outlet nearby any equipment that's currently using fossil fuels, in case anyone in the future wants to install a electric equipment to replace it. For a new home that's over 4,000 square feet, the requirements are actually similar, but in order to achieve, so the requirement, if it's mixed fuel, would be a net zero home with enough solar PV to get there. So that is essentially, a larger luxury homes that are being built have to go further than the requirements for more common construction. So, and that would be essentially like, having enough solar photovoltaic to get to net zero, which is typically like eight kilowatts or higher, it depends on project-specific things there. And then there's also that wiring requirement for electrification. If you're going that passive house option, which I briefly described, the requirement is just to have that wiring for electrification as well. As I mentioned, for home additions and alterations, the requirements are the same as they would be for the stretch code, there's no additional requirements on top of that. And for historic or existing homes, the requirements are also the same. For historic buildings, the energy code exemption would apply if it could potentially damage the historic fabric or function of the building, as per the code. All right, next slide, please. So as I noted, the solar requirement is for mixed-fuel buildings only, where solar would be required, and there's a suitable solar roof zone of 300 square feet or greater. Now, what's important about that is if there's not enough room on the roof for a solar zone, it's, the requirement wouldn't apply. The system can be ground-mounted as long as it's on-site. And if you are building a new all-electric home, these solar requirements are not applicable, they're only applicable to that mixed-fuel path. So just to summarize, all-electric, there's no solar requirement, if you're building the passive house, there's no solar requirement. If it's mixed-fuel, under 4,000 square feet, there's a requirement of four kilowatts of solar. If it's mixed-fuel, over 4,000 square feet, you have to have enough to get to net zero, as I said, which is about eight kilowatts or more. And for other residential projects, the requirements more for, like, multifamily and, like, bigger commercial projects are 0.75 watts per square foot, which is the same requirement as it would be for the commercial code. Next slide, please. So now going into some of the more, the requirements for multifamily buildings. So the requirements for the stretch code for all-electric buildings, as I mentioned for multifamily, there's three options that are available. There's the HERS index, this thing called thermal energy demand intensity, or TETI, or passive house. And this is applicable for new multifamily buildings, four stories above, over 12,000 square feet. So the specialized code would take away two of those pathways that are currently there for all-electric homes, and requires passive house certification for these buildings. And similar for the mixed-fuel new multifamily project, where you wouldn't be able to build with HERS or TETI, you would just use that passive house and also have that wiring requirement for future electrification. All right, next slide, please. Great, so I think that's it for now, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and Lisa's available to support as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Counselor, do you have any questions for the other presentation? Ms. McGrath.
Hi, that was very informative. How long do solar panels last?
I work primarily with the code, I'm not as familiar with the efficiency requirements around
Can they be, they be recycled?
Again, that's outside the purview of what I'm presenting about. So I, Lisa, I don't know if you have any more specifics on this, but
I don't, but I do believe they can be recycled, and I would say that what I've heard previously, at least from my past experience looking into them, is that the lifespan starts to disintegrate, like, at a certain place, so it gets less and less after probably, I think, 15 to 20 years.
Okay. Do you think this will be putting a lot on our electrical grid, if we're all electrical?
Yeah, so we have got questions regarding the impact on the electrical grid. The way I like to describe it is a new home built today is typically a lot more energy-efficient than one would be for older homes or existing homes. So in terms of the strain in the grid, I don't think there's as much impact, because new homes have a lot less energy usage and intensity as existing buildings. So from what I understand, the grid impact wouldn't be that significant there.
So between electric cars and the homes, you're not really sure, though?
Sorry?
Between electrical cars and the houses being all electrical, you don't really know how much it would put a burden on the grids?
So as I said, these, the homes built to the new code are typically very energy-efficient through practices like airtightness. So you build a really energy-efficient home that's well-air sealed, so you're not getting leaks from other sources, things like that. So these homes in general will have a lot less energy impact than a house that's already in, like, under construct, or that's already been developed.
But I mean, if you have the water, the cooking and all that on electric, have you considered that? Like, taking showers and baths and doing wash, I mean, that's going to be all electrical, right? Pumping the water's going to be bioelectric, stoves.
I was just going to say, there's a lot of efforts going forth for grid modernization as well. The utilities are putting forth a lot of money and a lot of energy to develop renewables and other sources of energy. And also, as he's, what he's trying to say is the load is less, is like, for heat pumps than it is for some other things.
Okay. So in New England, have you considered what would happen with electricity goes down? Because we have a lot of winter storms, I mean, we can see what happened in Texas when the wind binds went down.
Yeah, and that's actually a really great question. And that's actually one of the really big benefits of the energy code. So there is protection and resiliency associated with it. So when you lose power, for example, the home itself is based, is very well-instated. And so because of that, you're not losing the energy that you would in an existing home. So there, the Pacific Northwest National Laboratories actually put together a study relating to passive survivability, which is the survivability to, like, what you do when to respond to extreme weather events, like a storm, like power outages, things like that. And building to the new code, the 21 International Energy Conservation Code, as well as passive house, which is beyond that, and the requirement for the mixed-fuel buildings actually has a better impact on the amount of lives saved per year than building, than an existing building. So the energy code does have a really positive impact on resiliency.
So I didn't get the package ahead of time, so, but I think, I believe someone told me when I asked how electricity was made, wasn't, isn't it made from coal?
So there are fossil fuel generation plants that are out there to produce the energy, but I think that's another topic for discussion. This is primarily on the operable energy use in the building, not necessarily the grid there. I think that's a discussion for another day. And as Lisa mentioned, there are a lot of grid modernization efforts done through the utility programs to help increase the load of what's there, so.
But I mean, if we're going to switch over, shouldn't we, I mean, you want to save the earth and be green, shouldn't we know how much coal or whatever makes electricity now is going to arise, rather than using natural gas? I mean, should we take that in consideration?
There is a, you can go to nationalgrid.com and look for where your energy comes from, and it will tell you what percentage of your electricity is in the area that you live in is coming from different sources. And it's true that some energy is still, a great deal of energy is still coming from fossil fuels, it's true. And we are trying to move beyond that for our goals of 2030, 2040, and 2050.
But if that's how they make electricity, how would you move beyond that?
Renewables, the adding of renewables, the adding of battery storage, demand reduction, different things.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Robinson?
I have three very different questions.
Okay.
The first one was, could you, actually, it's more so just a request, could you address that there, I have heard from folks who, around this topic, that this actually becomes more that there, I have heard from folks who, around this topic, that this actually becomes more costly from a building and development standpoint. So that's the first one. The second question was around what, what, what do we need to actually do to get to this next level? Like, so I know it was a mention about we would need to create some kind of legislation. Is that something that we would need to draft ourselves? Is there, I imagine there's some kind of template?
Yeah, so there, there is a template provided by the Department of Energy Resources of model language to use to develop an ordinance.
Okay.
Available for the opt-in code.
And then my third question is, what is the cost benefit to the town versus are there any actual hard costs for the town to participate in this?
Yeah, so that's a great question. When it comes to costs, unfortunately, with the specialized code specifically, there aren't a lot of good cost studies available out there for it, just because it is so new. I know there are considering putting some together, but the added costs would essentially be for the upfront construction. I think that it's, there's two ways to look at it, right? So upfront costs would be added for the adoption, or for the addition of pre-wiring for future electrification, if you're mixed fuel, as well as the cost to install a four-kilowatt solar array. Now, those are upfront costs. I think another piece of this to remember is operational costs. So the energy bills you have in these homes are going to be a lot less energy-intensive, and you're going to save a lot of money on your energy bills by adopting better energy codes. So the actual cost to consumers over time is going to outweigh the cost of what it would be upfront.
Okay. So then, so that might help, well, it doesn't entirely help to frame the first question around developer.
Yeah.
So there's, there's, there's upfront, higher upfront costs, but sort of like you get back the savings later, is what you're saying?
Yeah, no, exactly. And there are a lot of really great incentives available, both through the state and the federal government, relating to building to high-efficiency homes. I know the Inflation Reduction Act extended the 45L tax credit to build a zero-energy-ready home or passive house, so I believe you get incentives up to $5,000 for that, just from that tax credit alone. Additionally, there are programs provided through MassSave that provide additional support for, to help supplement some of the upfront costs associated with these projects.
Okay. So for, and then in terms of the actual town benefit or any kind of costs, is there anything there, other than just if the town owns property and does new construction or anything like that?
Oh, I was just going to say, the grant funding, the accelerator grants, if you were to become a climate leader community and adopting specialized opt-in code as a requirement, they may be in excess of half a million dollars upwards from that. So there's competitive, there will be competitive grant rounds in addition to the green communities grants that the town could apply for to do decarbonization projects in municipal buildings.
Okay. Sorry, one final last question, I guess, for town administration, what's your point of view on this? Don't, don't rush to answer.
There's a pregnant pause there. I didn't, I didn't get your question, counselor.
So I'm just asking your opinion and your view, pro?
I think, I think it's a, it's a council decision. I know you've got legislation in committee that, that calls for the adoption of the specialized code. And again, I think that's, it's something that the council has to take in from, from the presenters, and then also listen to the, the building community and, and try to reconcile some of those concerns as well.
Okay, well, then I'll pass it back to the president.
Ms. Ellenberg, you have a question?
Actually, it's not a question, a little more of a comment, see what you think. People who opt for the mixed fuels option in their homes are theoretically more independent of the grid because they have options. Would that be correct? Than an electrical outage, just wiping everything in the house out?
One thing I would say is you're still allowed to have a generator outside of your homes. I mean, you are allowed to have a generator, if you need to have a generator.
Okay.
So that's dependent on mixed fuels, as are mixed fuels in your home, correct? If you're using oil or natural gas, so.
Yes.
Yeah, and you can qualify for the all-electric pathway if you do have an outdoor generator that is mixed fuel. So the generator does not have an impact on a, a status as all-electric.
My opinion is that this will make a unfortunate burden upon our builders, because I think people of common sense would want the options and not going all-electric. And now they've got to be mandated for solar panels, which I happen to have personally. And so I think it penalizes builders, is, and that's my view, and do you have any comment on that?
I would just say, I feel as though this requirement is trying to be more in line with some of the purposes outlined in the Climate Act of 2021. So I know that it's helping achieve some of our net zero goals the state has set, so these additional add-ons are more to encourage the use of all-electric equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg.
And one other thing I would say is I encourage Counselor Chase to talk to Steve Solari, your building official, and get his opinion. And I would also suggest that if you were to really consider signing this into legislation, that you have a public forum, more so than this, where you invite builders and you get feedback.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Counsel Liddy?
Just a quick question. I live in a condo, and it's a homeowners' association, and we can't do anything with solar. It's not allowed. What else can we do to reduce a carbon footprint? I, the house, the condo that I live in, there's separate houses attached by garage, and, you know, there's, I mean, the electric bill here in town for me, I moved from Brockton, it's double what it was in Brockton. It's absolutely crazy. I would love another option to do something, but I, you know, how, my condo was built in like 95, and, and some of the development was 85, so they're not, certainly not energy-efficient buildings.
So there are a few things that I could say, is, one of the things is I believe the town is looking into municipal aggregation, which is where it's an opt-out as opposed to an opt-in. The town would try to procure a better rate for its residents, and there's usually also an option that allows greener energy, a certain percentage of greener energy if the town decides to do that. There's also sometimes opportunities for community, community solar, where people who don't have the option of adding solar on their homes, purchase solar in, from a community solar field. And then just, you could, if you, it would cost more, I'm not going to lie to you, but you can also usually like national, like there's third-party suppliers. Sometimes it's less, but you can get renewable energy through third-party suppliers that has a higher amount of renewable energy included.
Thank you.
Any other counselors have any questions? Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, I'm just curious about whether there might be, I, I may have misheard, but I thought I understood that there would be certain changes to the existing stretch code that we've adopted here that might be important for us to know about in consideration of now the specialized code, as we weigh that off, that possible option.
Yeah, absolutely. So those additional changes you're referring to actually took effect as of January 1st, 2023, for residential buildings, and July 1st, 2023, for commercial buildings. So those changes have been available for about a year now for different building types. There is a lot more content in the stretch code, and because of that, it's a lot more to cover in terms of this. I think two big pieces of it are electric vehicle pre-wiring requirements, I believe, for electric-ready, as well as requirements to install for mechanical ventilation, a balance system of an energy recovery ventilator or heat recovery ventilator as your whole-house mechanical ventilation system. Additionally, I know there are requirements for existing buildings that are a little bit less stringent than those requirements that are for new construction. So the HERS requirements for 42 or 45 for new construction go up to 52, 55, or 58 for existing buildings.